I'm going to call the meeting to order, the select board meeting of August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Amendments to the agenda. I have two because they are time sensitive. One is a request from the fire department for permission to hold a coin drop during Labor Day. Which I'll put under the select board review. The other is a request from Oklahoma County Planning Commission set in on the wastewater project that will put under the schoolhouse revitalization. If there's no objections, that is. Hearing none, approve the minutes of August second, two thousand twenty-three. You have a motion?
Make the motion to.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor? Host, so carry. Comments from the community?
Well, we started at six oh five, but we'll go ahead. Somebody's coming. So, um, we are from Cora Road and we just want to know what the plans are on six to vote. And we're not getting any answers from the person who's supposed to be giving this.
Me?
No.
Oh. Oh.
I understand what was said was that this person said that he could downgrade our roads to class four. And I do not appreciate that remark to residents on a road that has a lot of presence. I think that was out of line. I think an apology is more than. And I think we need to know what the next step is of this from that. If you've got a representative who's saying these things, or we have select work, we want to know what select work is.
We are waiting for FEMA to come to look at the projects. We're having a meeting tomorrow with them and they're going to give us the date. We're allowed to quickly make the roads passable, but they need to come and inspect them so they can write up their, I don't know, each project for it. And that's the way it works. And so we're hoping tomorrow at noon, we're having a Zoom with FEMA. We're hoping that they will set a date with us to come to Walker.
So the other thing, what is this about class four road?
I haven't heard anything about that.
So I might need to speak to that. Mr. Klein, did you say that or don't you know? I want it on the record.
I guess I did. Now did was I.
Was that stupid? Come on. I'm sorry, but no.
You know, that was, that was like, that was like.
It's not Belinda, stop it.
Fuck it, Belinda. That was the heated comment on people that ripped up that road, came back and told us that we put sand on it. And said, what the fuck are you gonna do? And when are you gonna do something about it? Because we're the Harrisons. And it's our road. And we do it the way we want to do it. Who said we're the Harrisons?
Who said it was their road? Who said it, uh, command affects it?
Yes, you need to know.
I don't know. I didn't hear you. I know you did. I know you did.
And we do not remove any gravel on that road. Why don't anybody in the right line move gravel from a road that's already been washed out? Why don't you take more out?
I did you. I don't know.
You just made a pass.
We were not fighting.
You worked that road without permission.
We are done.
Because you're the Harrison.
Yeah, we are done having this. This isn't the way we hold meetings. All right. So it was a lot of hurt feelings. He said, she said. What is your question? What is it that you want right now?
But we couldn't, we didn't need to do what we did to get out that a fire truck and an ambulance could make it out. It could get to us. And there's no way. We have pictures. It showed that there were no ways.
Listen, we can, the town of Walker cannot fix every road every minute for every person for safety. And they were working twenty-four seven getting the roads open. And you know that.
Okay, and why were we penalized for making it accessible so that we can access the things that we needed in life?
You needed to reach out to the town. That's our property. That is our property and that's, that's the correct way to do it. We need to call out to the town and say, can we help you? And do that. We had volunteers doing that in other parts of town. Jim Roberts. He didn't charge us.
But nobody came to our part.
The money don't matter.
We don't, we don't. Here's a picture of ninety-seven. My father's crawler is fixing the road.
Yeah, good. Yeah.
And nobody cared. Actually, he was praised for doing it. So we did it this time. We just made it slow so the water could go through so we could actually get out. And we're getting pissed off.
Can I, as a real, did you see any of the pictures and video I sent ninety-two? I had made.
Nobody shared anything with me.
Um, Eric told me he would share it and he would also have made it with us after we saw it because he said FEMA is not here to pay for our road because we have no team pictures and also because you guys went and did what we did. I videoed as the water was a river. No fire truck, no ambulance could get through. All of us on the road, including Jason Graham, Ian Grant, and Joel, we all wanted, we have the right to be able to get out and.
So did, so did you fix the road when it looked like this?
Yeah.
What did you, where did the water go?
The water subsided coming from the river.
Right, so, so there was, at this point, you did not fix the road.
No.
Not. And you couldn't have fixed the road. No, and you couldn't have gotten out.
No.
Right, right. So. Right, so you're there stuck for a while and then the water subsided. Could a fire truck get in at that point? Why was that?
Because the water was right in broke. It built itself. It's all a pond. So the only way the water was going to flow out, we went on the left side, made little ditches for the water to drain. And then what was left was just like this. We took the dozers, moved it out and it all.
But he has, Kurt has all the information from beginning to end. And all we did was make it so the water was drained out and we could leave. If there was emergency, no one would come in and help us unless we did that. And we didn't see anyone until three days after the flood.
We called the hotline. We realized the proposal with the hotline call and we call, I called. He didn't even know we're washed out. So why is he called for? You need a break? I said, no, I think we're a little bit past the break. He didn't even know where to look. The offices on the roads were not checked.
There's a tree still halfway across the road. It blew down along the flow two days after the flood. I cut that out so the electric department could put the power lines back up.
What's wrong with them trying to help themselves so they can?
Yeah. We feel like.
Who's in part of it? I don't know.
We tried to do a favor to help the town in a way to make sure we could get access. There was people from Florida just came to their camp that day. They had no food, no water, nothing. They couldn't get out anything. They came in the night of the storm at seven o'clock. They couldn't get out. They're unfortunately they've gone by Florida. Anyway.
And days before this, we actually, this is past my driveway. One of the culverts going onto the fast car road actually failed. And we told Kurt about it. He came out, Dylan came out. And we also repaired this one because we had to in order for them to get out.
That was before the storm?
This was before this.
And what if Dylan came out, what did he do?
I don't know.
He never saw.
Oh.
He never saw.
I saw a line going down the road. There again, I'm like, our. We didn't have to bring it out. Eventually it started to stop flowing all the roads that are going in the culvert.
That's right, before my driver.
So.
Two culverts in the middle of that road in the fields that are, trees are growing out so much in front of it. They barely get any flow. The tree was breaking the flow of the culvert.
So you need. This is on the flats?
Right on.
Yes.
Back in ninety-five, when they put the culverts in. They opened what he said. They put the culverts on the highest point.
The rest might not be there, so.
Highest point of the road. So everything will go over the road. We tried to tell him, but they had no way what he said, so that was, but that was ninety-five.
The point is there's no maintenance on it. The trees are growing in. I mean, there's still. Trees are growing in the culverts. In the end, both have, both side.
Can I keep this?
Never been nice.
And we have a lot of pictures we can send you. As we said, we can. Yeah.
Where's the? Yeah.
Is he still in the building or did he leave? This is fun.
Yeah, we paid fifteen dollars and then the county drug had from our camera, we're dead and we can see it. Out of our garden. It's not about the money. It's not about the money. And it's not about how to do it. We don't like doing it. It benefits us and everybody. So we can get anything. Yeah, we're not looking for a pat on the shoulder. We're just looking for people not to give us shit. We brought a little bit we did. And the state of the earth. Who in their right mind didn't know anything? We not get gravel out of a road. What would you gain from that? What would you gain from it? You know, if anything, we want to put the gravel back in, but Kurt said, and Dylan said, we don't want to put that back in the road. It's full of sand and soap. And then you got permission from Klein and then he asked Dylan. If we could take the gravel that was in the cornfields because the mine was done on Saturday. Hey, you can get the stuff out of here. And I'm not going to touch a bit of stone until I get permission from the town.
And that's what we did. That Dylan's permission gave me that we could file some up for.
Put up on about four roads. That's what we did.
Think about, we ended this with in trouble.
And we didn't get charged for that. I don't know. That was just something we wanted to do. And we're getting shit in the city.
We feel like we're being penalized. Our road isn't getting repaired. Every other road in town seems to be repaired. We're not getting repaired because we did what we did.
Personally, I have a feeling that he's got a grudge with us. And that's why all these aren't getting submitted, isn't.
All right, so nothing has been submitted until FEMA comes. We're all waiting for that.
So they haven't come around at all?
No, they have not come around.
They came, they came to your house, right?
Residential?
Yes, residentials. That's all. Are different, they're different pots of money.
But in ninety-five, I was understanding that towns could picture other roads and submitted us to FEMA. So having to wait, they could go ahead and do the repairs they needed to do. And the pictures would approve it and they would have reversed.
You can do emergency repairs and so forth. You know, so that people can get out. That's what you can do. Like, you see, we haven't done anything down here by the garage or anything. There's quite a few that we, they're not finished. If you do have pictures, it'd be helpful and we will be out there when FEMA shows up to write up the project.
I got a question. I can appreciate the FEMA has to do something, but roads need repaired anyway. Is like not going to happen if FEMA makes a move? Because if we wait for the federal government, these guys are fine example. Hop into them, fix it. Get this. And if the town's going to sit around and wait for FEMA to come around and justify all this.
So can you get in and out?
That's not really my point.
Well, that's, that's, yes, and you can get in and out. We're waiting until they come. So they tell us how much money they'll give us.
Okay, but if they say they're going to give you half as much as needed, I mean, half as many repairs are going to be done?
No.
Right, that's my point. We'll wait. Let's do it and we'll pay us later because things kind of don't. We wait around for the federal government, really? Okay, okay.
It's more of a, the trouble with the FEMA stuff is if you don't follow their paperwork to a T, you're not going to get any money because they'll just deny everything, just start denying everything on some degree. You get no money. If you don't follow all their hoops first. You gotta go through all their hoops to even get money later. If you'd missed one step, they will deny your stuff for everything.
You're required to go to these recovery meetings. We went to one. We're having another one.
Yeah, yeah.
And they'll come.
That sounds like a lot of red tape and nobody has, nobody, nobody has any desire to back it. There it is.
Well, the town of Walker cannot take on the burden of all these repairs financially. So we need to play the game.
The game is waiting? Waiting to do the physical work?
I'm not fighting with you. That's my answer.
And so you're saying waiting for paper, like you mentioned.
FEMA.
What's going to be later?
FEMA is a very mixed blessing.
I understand.
And the bureaucracy with those people make a plaster saint weave.
And it's. The bureaucracy is part of what happens here, but up there, work is always going to have to be done. But bureaucracy's success or failure is not going to be counted in that concrete stuff. That's just my way. So the meaning of bureaucracy is not working fast enough. It's like, okay, I can appreciate, I can appreciate it. There's a lot of work to be done. But it's suggested everybody, nothing's going to happen until the giant wheel of bureaucracy functions is, I don't know.
Trouble is all towns right now are in the same boat, not this year. Every town has to jump through FEMA's hoops. Because the trouble is their budgets. If they were to put everything in there, they couldn't afford to pay it all on their own. If you want to get the money, they have to come to the hoops. Every town that got washed out from Cardwick, everywhere's in the same boat right now. They have to wait and wait and do all the steps with all the documentation and all of that.
Also, they want a deterrent to even do it. While we all shit, I gotta go through and I want to probably check for it.
I will say in the last, when we submitted stuff, we have got reimbursed. Ninety-five, we did. Ninety-seven ended Halloween two thousand nineteen. We did receive pretty much almost a hundred percent. I think it was run ninety.
How, how is your road now? Usable?
One lane, one lane at best.
I was gonna, all I was gonna do was thank you for your hard work. And I understand, I, I understand why you had to go and do it. So.
It didn't melt or in any, any shape, form. We didn't disturb.
Even though they came on that Thursday or Friday, whatever day they came, there was still a pond. And every time it rained, it poned. And so we did take some gravel out of the field and put into the road because my better half will not drive through water. So I took it out and put it in the road. So now the water just sits on the side.
You, you did what you had to do.
Okay, the road itself is probably a foot, a foot and a half below the sides. So by not pulling that water off, let it drain in the lower field, that would have just stuck.
Did you have the pictures of what I say or something?
No, I just have a, I took after everything kind of dried up. But you can see that the road is lower than it is.
And why is it from the beginning that you have?
That was the water. The water does the mess.
What, you guys see?
What do you guys see, Melchon?
We're gonna have to move on. Can you just, we have other people. Can we?
Help my station.
Yeah.
But I guess the biggest thing that bothered me when you were talking to Kurt was, he said, if we hadn't touched our road, it probably would have been repaired. He said, you take, for example, the Amor Pond Road. Everybody left it alone and tried to help one neighbor or the other. So we've done it all finished. It looked as bad as yours. All the culverts are in and it's all repaired. Well, it did look as bad as ours. And you can't compare ours. I guess he told me literally, if we had left the block, it would have been repaired. Like the Amor Pond.
I just think you've got a hair in here. It sounded it.
Thank you, God.
How long have you been with it?
But thank you, God.
Yeah.
No, thank you. Thank you for what you've done.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I think if you'd like, you, you should get the disc.
I'll talk to you about it, mom.
And it shows the flood going on.
I could see it when I was coming out of the North Walker Drive.
Well, thank you. Have a good night.
Tyler?
Yes.
Hi, just on time.
So, Thomas.
This is Tyler Mumley. He's an engineer that the Schoolhouse Revitalization Committee applied for a municipal planning grant and he was the, we put out an RFP and he's the one that applied. And I'm not sure why you're here tonight to ask, answer any questions anyone might have before we award him project.
I understand that the Schoolhouse Committee felt it could be a good idea for town to meet with this select board before we forward with the award of the contract and have a brief discussion about the select board's roles and scope for. Does that sound not right to you, Tyler?
Yeah, it's just a conversation that I've had with you. I haven't, I haven't talked to the committee at all. But looking forward to it. But I also agree to be good to come here and so you could see my face and know who I am and would be excited to work with the town. I actually did an inspection years ago with Chad and I blanked on Chad's last name. Good friend of mine.
Roy.
Chad Roy. And now it's back and you guys were originally trying to look into it and see what the options were. That was more from a structural standpoint. I'm more of a civil site engineer. So I never knew where that went. So when I was came back up, I was interested to get back involved. There's something we could do to help and figure something out. I think, I think the scope of work is, you know, still yet to really be defined, but it's going to be based on a little discovering. But that's how site development works. Kind of figure out what exists and what the options might be and make decisions and move forward. So that's what I do. Do a lot of that for private landowners, developers, municipalities, and looking forward to helping out here.
So you work on the outside of the building, basically?
Uh, my, my real expertise is basically everything that's on the ground and green or under it. So I'm a site planner. So, you know, wastewater systems or water supplies, site layout, grading, you know, existing proposed contours, developing a site plan for a site contractor to work with. Working to get, you know, appropriate permits. Work with zoning and the DRV to get approval for conditional uses, whatever they might be. Or to get a state water wastewater permit for whatever that, that use might be. I do other state permitting, like construction erosion permitting, stormwater permitting, Mact fifty permitting and all that good stuff that comes with land development and, and so, so the mop. So that's, that's what I do. So I would, I wouldn't really be involved with the ins and outs of the building itself, except to understand its uses and what, what we want to do with the, with the property from the site and all.
Do you do parking?
Who?
Parking?
Yep, absolutely. So figure out, you know, what, again, what uses are, what the needs are. Help with any kind of configuration of, of existing and proposed parking. Figure out the best, the best layout.
Parking and all the drainage issues that come along when you start doing all the stormwater issues that come along with that.
Yep, absolutely. You know, some of that's, some of that's driven by state stormwater design permitting requirements and rules. Sometimes just good common sense about what, what works for, for a small area.
You have any other questions? For Tyler?
Let's, yeah. So let's, when does, you know, like when the committee needs to have a question, you guys?
Well, we didn't meet this month. We usually meet the second Wednesday of the month. There was nothing in August really. We're because waiting for you to start and waiting, we have another contract grant for the interior that's happening at the same time. So this, not really any work for us unless you have questions or something of the committee.
I don't, I mean, I think it'd be good to, to meet with the committee. You know, it's kind of a kickoff.
Yeah.
And get going that way. Cause I guess I think there's just some, some discussions and discovery to have to be done first and where we, you know, dump it headfirst.
You're not site blocking.
Yeah.
So you can put that on your calendar.
Absolutely. My office is in Morseville, where I just created Morseville. My company is Mummly Engineering. And and happy to help. You guys have your hands full these days, so. Looks like it could be a fun project for the, for the town. So happy to be a part of it.
So Seth, do we need a motion to accept his proposal? Is that what the select board's role in this is?
Yeah, to, to accept his proposal.
So this has already been awarded and we've already appropriated the match through the ARPA funds.
Yeah. That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. So I'll make that motion to contract with Mumley Associates.
Mummly Engineering.
Engineering to work on the MPG grant for the schoolhouse revitalization.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Host, so Carrie.
Excellent. You very much.
Welcome. Nice to meet you.
Thanks.
So I put something on your desk here, a copy with the Model Plan and County Planning Commission. It's a memo from Seth. And he's here to quickly discuss that with you because it's time sensitive. It couldn't wait till the next meeting.
Yeah, so as you know, the state, DC has awarded a full fifth a fairly large grant for the engineering and pending voter approval, implementation of wastewater for the for the village center here on Route fifteen and School Street. Aiming for a bond goal to get a voter. Aiming for a bond vote to get voter approval for moving forward in, um, spring, uh, next year. Uh, ideally at town meeting, um. D E C also sometimes takes a while to act on paperwork, so, um. We're still waiting on the grant agreement, though we do have a formal award. Um, in order to stay on schedule for spring twenty twenty four bond vote, there are a few things that need to happen. Uh, essentially before, um. Before we would need warm weather and end of fall, um. The first is doing a windshield survey of, um, to identify potential levels, um, and that's based on. Uh, vegetation. So if frost kills all the. Vegetation, that's difficult to do. Uh, and the other piece is beginning, um. Background water quality monitoring, which is something that's required for any in-ground sort of base, uh. Uh, wastewater system, um, over a certain size. So the costs associated with those are eligible, uh, for the, the grant from D E C. Uh, will ultimately be, um, reimbursed through that grant. Um, but the. Like I said, in order to complete the work in this, uh. Construction season, uh, we need to really begin in the next couple of weeks, um, and probably won't have the formal grant agreement. In the next couple of weeks, um, that agreement will be structured to allow pre-award of costs. Um, so what I'm here today, uh, to do is to seek your permission, um, for. To, uh, to start that work, to incur pre-award costs, um, to be reimbursed once the grant agreement is. Is finalized.
Now.
Go ahead.
And this money is coming from where?
It is, um. The, um, the. State, uh, Department of Environmental Conservation, um, the state of Vermont allocated, um. A portion of the ARPA funds that the state received to, um. Uh, village wastewater in ten different communities. One of those communities was, was well cut. So this money is coming out, would, will come out of that, uh, that grant.
Point five plus million.
Yeah.
We received that grant. We received the award and the letter already. We are waiting for the paperwork from the state through their grants department, which they're always backed up.
Yeah.
Is what he's saying.
And to try to get all the, uh. Things in line for any possible better engineering stuff. For anything wastewater side and water takes for everyone in the state. It was sometimes you gotta think some things. You're better off starting the year before if we can do anything until you go through to get your money.
Right. Yep.
And you're sure that, um. These. Um, things they're gonna do. Are, um. It's all right for us to start working before we receive the money?
I, yes, I have been writing an email from D E C stating.
Okay, that's my only concern, because sometimes with highway grants, they say you can't start until you sign contractor. But if you have something in writing that we're not on the hook for this. Twenty thousand.
Yeah, I got, I got it in writing, um. Yesterday, uh, which is why I'm.
I'm gonna zoom in. There isn't, they haven't, there's not an archaeological, they haven't there yet. What is that, the construction phase later that they're like asking for that?
They will, so they, uh, so good question, um. To, when, when they did the initial hand probes up at the, um, school fields, they did have to do like a tabletop archaeological review. Uh, once they have the, um, more detailed engineering plans, it will need to be an archaeological review, but it's. It's too soon to do that this season, so that, um. Um, if the voters approve moving forward, uh, at town meeting, probably next year's work. So the goal is to do enough work to have. Um, you know, information in for an informed vote of. What a system design will look like, what it will cost, um, beyond what you have now, you know, based on some more detailed engineering, so the voters can make a. You know, a decision, um, next spring. Um, and if they do vote to go forward, because it is funded with ARPA funds, um, the town would have until. The end of twenty twenty six to. Um, inference, um. So voters vote no, uh, there's no payback risk for work up until the point included in this.
Any more questions?
Get the money that we can, uh. All I needed.
Just, well, we don't have the money. We're gonna get the money. It's kind of a dist of a cash flow thing temporarily.
That and, that and also. That is, I also recall, was it wastewater and all that stuff's on the regular ARPA stuff anyways. So even in worst case, we can use the ARPA money.
Did you understand me? Did you understand me or you?
Yes.
Okay.
Well.
We promised the money, but we don't have it in hand.
Well, I make the motion that we. We go ahead with this. It's, uh.
Study.
Study, yes, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions from Seth? So all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Host. So carried. Thank you, Seth, for coming out.
Just don't get your feet wet.
Yes. I think if they do the background water. And where the conditions of those. So. Yeah. There.
The, the holes have changed.
The holes have changed, yeah.
They're going in the river, why?
Um, well, they. The sampling, and they, they, they thought they'll follow all the holes. The, the sampling doesn't follow. Actual.
They gotta see what the count is now before they can say it.
The count of what?
Bacteria.
Bacteria above and below probably the area.
Really gonna be bad when you get up towards Hardwick.
Is it gonna, um, they'll be affected?
I asked them that question and there, there could be elevated levels, um. But that's why they do it over a six-month period, so it, um, if there are.
Yeah.
Things like that.
Yeah, I think they're gonna be pretty high until good hard frost right now.
Yeah, I think that, and, and that, that is, that is possible.
It's probably like all the rest of the. How they get the rest of their water samples from the stream, which is funding from the state, with the wastewater stuff. Probably when they get, they send a bunch of volunteers to get a sample above and below a wastewater plant in the summer twice a year. To get their water quality data and that is their sampling for those.
Yeah.
Now to these for permits.
Yeah.
Two samples. In the summer.
Yeah. These, these folks are, I'll say, the, the folks from Stone are more thorough. In my experience with working to them, um. You know, they. Recognize that there's the, the permitting requirements, but then also recognize the people that the community have to live with. And so I, I think you'll get a very thorough, um. Answers, um, and, you know, there's, there's value in knowing that, um, regardless, this is, you know, the condition that. The river is in terms of these questions, so.
Yeah, the only thing I can say is probably from. This bridge overpass over here.
Yeah.
Down through to this bridge. Do you want to be honest?
I agree.
It's got a wicked undertow in there. We've lost two people.
Yeah, I will, I will warn them to that.
There is several bad holes in this river.
So, um, between these two bridges is the place to be.
This steel, what, it's on the rail trail to the one over there. Over the, overpass by the cemetery.
Oh.
And then down by the pond road, there's another one.
Yes, yeah.
And so I have a few, is it, uh, we have a meeting with the bridge. People, do we have one with, on, uh, September sixth? At nine o'clock, do we?
Uh, which, which, which?
Wall Street. Alright.
Thank you.
My, um. I was a little confused if I put in my calendar. Oh, I wrote it, but I think that's what it means.
Yeah.
That's you.
Um, that, that is Wednesday, September sixth at nine AM. And we are meeting with, um, the bridge people to discuss how the, uh. Pipe will come across the bridge. We're mostly gonna listen, but it's mostly for the engineers to discuss it with the. Bridge engineers. Thank you.
Great.
Never got to send you that list. I will. Later.
No problem. And we'll be reaching out in a few months.
Okay, thanks. I think we should go back to correspondence. I missed that. We have only one piece and that is a highway permit from Richard Whitman. Um. They have on Lake Wapinaki Road. Dylan signed up on it. So it must be all right.
Is that a driveway permit?
Yeah.
Yes.
Should I not say? So I'll just pass that around, people listening.
So this is a good time to interject. I resigned from the select board effective immediately. I will continue to work, um. On the TA projects until we find another TA. But I will not step foot in this office again. That was an all-out attack. An organized attack by Belinda. And I'm done. Absolutely done. I, I can't look at her. I can't, I just can't. So I'm sorry, but I resigned from the board. You guys need to step up.
Sorry to hear that and I'm sorry for that outburst.
It was an organized attack. From Belinda. I can't come back here. I can't live with that. She's done this in the past. How many board members has she kicked out?
Well, that makes it even more important that you don't, that you go home and sleep on it. And override it by the fact that she will not beat you down. And so I want you to think about it.
Alright.
Um.
We're both elected officials.
Yeah.
And that was a. An awful. And contour.
Well, I got to, I got to see that at town meeting when she ran against me because I. I don't know why, after thirty-three years. She decided I was no good, but I mean, you just need to. St- st- stand where you think you should be, you know?
The voters have put faith in you. And you've been really good and we all take a oath of office and we take it seriously. She's an elected official, which we have no control over.
Right, I know.
And.
Can I, can I speak? Monica. I, I, I wa- I witnessed what happened also, Kurt. I want to tell you that you have done an outstanding job. I know that. Jim was speaking with you and I'm sure a thousand other people were speaking with you on the day of the flood. You know, and this select board is the best darned select board that I think we've ever had. And I really hope you will reconsider. And I know that. Um, that things. In the office will probably be tense. Um, until things settle down a little bit, but maybe hopefully it could be, you know. Somehow worked through, but please reconsider.
Right, thank you, Monica. Yeah. Just to clarify, uh, I got. That attack just. You know, I'm usually.
Your time.
Yeah, I'm usually pretty even keel, uh, but, you know, pushing me over the edge like that and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go. And I didn't even get to answer the question. So John, I called John back. I call everybody back. I called him back. He wants to know what's going on with this road. And I said exactly what you said, Linda. I said FEMA has got to inspect the road. And secondly, you did work on the road without permission. And we have to have the road inspected. He in turn gave me a speech about how he's lived here his whole life. How the last time there was a flood in ninety whatever. Everything went smoothly. There was no problems with, with people like me, et cetera, et cetera. And I said, well, you know, and this is also following up from having to deal with Franklin Nutt and. Uh, uh. The other Harris who goes up there and harasses Franklin Nutt. Having this guy come down harass our guys at the. At the, uh.
Garage.
Garage, uh. You know, claim we went over there and put sand in there instead of gravel. Claim that they didn't do anything to the road. Ask anybody in the road crew. They frickin' ruined that road. And. The next thing we were going to do, we met with Dylan yesterday. I said, Dylan, what are we gonna do with Cory Road? He said, well, you know, it's gonna take twenty-five loads of gravel. Um, and we don't have the time to do it because our, you know, V-Trans is not allowing us so far. To delay our segments. We just don't have the time or to, to do it. So he's gonna hire Adam Allen to do it. Adam was gonna do it next week and. Fix their road, but instead they decide to come in and just attack. And what the hell?
Well, the world is full of lots of people and maybe we should think about, um. If you agree to stay on finding you a different office.
Well, I won't come here.
Oh.
No, it's, no, I can't come here.
Well, we'll find you a different office.
I, I'd also like to note that, you know, you mentioned that Jim. Did some work on the road, but he did call Kurt. Before he did that. Um, and Kurt, he got permission from Kurt to work on the road.
I know, that's what I was pointing out. Other people worked on the road and volunteered, but they got permission. And that is what I was. Trying to say.
And the photographs that were taken to document it for FEMA. Kurt also reminded Jim to do that, so. I, I think that that, that was a very important thing that happened and I can't imagine what Kurt was going through that, that morning. Fielding all those kind of calls.
Well, no, everybody, Monica, everybody was great. Everybody did the right thing. Um, except for this group and they just, they made me mad. Tell you the truth, they just made me mad.
Happens to all of us, Kurt.
Don't let the old guard get you down.
The difference is FEMA's coming. Where before, gee. There was enough issues with Barry, Montillier, LeBlanc.
Yeah.
That's why they're coming. And. We do, we gotta jump through all those stupid hoops. Just like every other. Federal thing. I can't get around it. So. And I know your understanding and feelings. Trust me.
So do you have any energy to do a project managers report?
Did we get to the private burial?
No, we haven't, we were just the project manager, that's who we are.
Okay. So, yeah, I guess the, the, the study results from Gulf Road and North Wocatay Road are still just kinda out there flapping in the breeze. They had a request for the speed limit to be changed to twenty-five miles an hour. And um, we haven't had a chance to get together and make a decision. I think we probably are gonna have to ask uh on McGrath to uh, come in and talk to us and, and make that be a formal request. I don't think it'll do a bit of good, but he's totally convinced otherwise. The Portelet uh, is canceled. Uh, the small scale safety grant, as I mentioned last time, has been approved. Um, and we should start to be able to get some signs from them. The procurement and personnel policies, they were online. Part of the uh, process of putting things online has always been very, very sloppy. Belinda put some in sometimes. Um, other people put some in sometimes, and it ended up that these two got in without signatures. Um, so that has been corrected. I found the originals and they've been put in with signatures. Um, I'd suggest going forward, once we get our new website up, uh, that we uh, really restrict who can access that. Um, and so if there is something missing, we know who, why it's missing, or where it's missed. I just wanted to mention property buyouts, Linda has been working on that. Um, sounds like there have been some more requests, I'm not sure. Um, but one of the questions that's out there is what um what is the timeline for these kinds of buyouts? Is it, is it years or is it uh?
Six months to a year.
Six months to a year.
I have five of them now. The state emailed me, Vermont Emergency Management, they, they received all the notices of intent. And so I'm in communication with them. I talked to Seth today. So the next step is, uh, there's some work, paperwork that the homeowners need to fill out and get back, but then the town needs to apply for grants, there's two different grants, there's one through Vermont Emergency Management, um, Hazard Mitigation Grant, and the other one is Flood Resiliency, and Seth is going to help me walk through which properties would benefit by which one. So it's in the beginning stages. I know there's lots of questions from the homeowners, but I don't have all the answers.
Okay.
One being what about my taxes?
What about my taxes?
Do I pay my, you know, I don't wanna pay taxes on the house, I can't live. So there's a lot of questions that need to be resolved.
Okay. I just the reason I wanted to put it on here is um it seems to be a question that comes up into this office quite often, is what's, what's happening with the buyouts? Um, you know, what are the timelines and so forth? So uh, you know, that, that's helpful, thank you. Brownfield Study, uh, we're in phase two of the Brownfield Study, it's uh, it looks like they're gonna start work on it. Um, this had been sent to the EPA. It required signatures from here to K Street in Washington DC. Um, and, and hopefully they will actually do something. It is an amazing bureaucracy to get that down. This is a little plot of land, but wow. Garage equipment purchases, so the kind of reality is starting to hit us in the face here. We lost a lot of equipment from, under garage flood. Um, and it's getting to a point where we have to, uh, to continue to function, we have to buy equipment. Uh, welder, mo- most specifically right now, an air compressor needs to be purchased. Um, and those kinds of items, and so it kinda raises the question. The insurance, Deb is working with the insurance company. The insurance company may have made one visit here, um, and really has been silent since then. And so the question is, do we go ahead and start to replenish our supplies at our expense? Or um, or do we start outsourcing? You know, if you need welding, take it to a welder. If you need, you know, uh, air compressor, bring in a portable air compressor. Or, or do we go forward and buy this stuff?
Well, I guess it depends on how often they use it. I mean, an air compressor, don't they use that a lot?
Oh, yeah.
They need that for their tools, their tires.
Right.
To run a lot of things, so it's pretty.
Can they purchase a new motor for that compressor?
I have no idea.
They, I thought they were going to have um, that men and I look at it. It's over there by, um, you know, or what's it called?
It's over by that Indian restaurant.
Yeah. Yeah, that's where you have all that, that sort of thing done. And the insurance said that, that it needed to be inspected, and there needs to be a letter saying it doesn't work.
Oh, yeah, I looked at the welder, for example. It's a model that hasn't been made since two thousand and one. So, yeah, like a new welder would be like four thousand dollars or something. Maybe this is worth seven hundred and fifty. Six hundred to seven fifty, and the air compressor too is old. And so I had sent an email to the insurance adjuster asking him, you know, if you know, if our estimated value on these items is you know, that low, do we have to, you know, pay someone to come out and tell us what it's worth, and then even, and pay more money for that? And uh, so I get no response um, from the insurance adjuster. I don't even get a uh, you know, I got your email, sorry I'm out in the field, you know, I just hear nothing from him, so um, you know, maybe I can go back to BLCT and um, at least talk to the human. Um, but yeah, I don't know. Um, but yeah, it's, it's a problem, uh, there's nothing moving forward. I'm trying to work with ED uh, to see how we might estimate value of tools or other things that were on the floor that were ruined. You know, and estimate their value the day before the flood. We don't do depreciation, so we don't normally engage in this, and so we don't have like an easy list of invoices to check. Um, there are payments, you know, I can see that, uh, you know, a hundred payments were made to NAPA. I don't know what else for it. You know, and so, uh, yeah, and, you know, to try and get the router to work on this, you know, very few segments, obviously people want their roads fixed. And so, you know, I'm asking, so what are these air filters worth? You know, and so it's been a problem.
I think they didn't want a value, they just wanted a letter saying that it was broken. Wasn't fixable, that's what I heard.
Yeah, on the high end.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the welder, if it's gone through water, those coils are gone. They're done.
They won't accept that, you have to prove it.
Okay, let's plug it in and see it blow up.
At the adjuster's.
And have the adjuster plug it in.
Does it need to be an adjuster or someone?
I asked him, you know.
Does it have to be someone else outside the town that
Well.
Can check it?
Yeah, you needed to get a professional to say that it didn't work anymore, just like we got Born's, a letter from Born saying the furnace was shot. And we got it in writing.
Basically, you just need a standard electrician, just come and put a meter on him, he's gonna tell you the goal.
You could also do the compressor too.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I don't know. It's not FERL anymore. I don't know who it is. But even a standard household electrician resident, electrician can put a meter on it.
Wasn't that FERL though, the one?
Now he rebuilt motors.
Oh.
Would rebuild. He's no longer around.
That guy there near the um
He does gas engines.
Tom takes his air compressor and stuff there and he fixes hoses and he fixes his, uh, all his tools and stuff and all the time.
Right.
I don't know. That's a quick suggestion. Ask him if he'd do a house call. I don't know, can we just lump in all the little stuff as one price? Just say, you know, miscellaneous highway supplies, you know, filters and oil and all that, it's just supplies and pick a number instead of anguishing over it forever, because um
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I would do.
You know, the shop I'm in, we had to itemize every stupid thing. Everything. Didn't matter if it was a cutter, wrench, socket. Allen wrench, had to write it down, itemize. So I guess it depends on that insurance company.
And then zoom in down, so probably ask later on replacement value at the current market rate too.
Well, they might wanna know that, but they're not gonna give that to us. We don't get replacement value, we get the value of the damage for the floor.
And I think that brings up a financial issue that's really is critical, and that is, is that we should only expect that insurance uh, for municipal, for the municipality would be, you know, maybe fifty, sixty percent of replacement value, if, if even that. And so, there's gonna be a there, there may be an opportunity, I guess, that you can then go to FEMA and say your insurance company would only cover this much, and FEMA, will you cover the rest of it? Um, and that, I don't know about that, but it's a whole next, next step process.
Yeah, that is the next step afterwards.
There's a thing, it's been on the radio, that the law school is having different lawyers help with this problem with FEMA in flood loss. May be worth trying to get over that.
But we, we have to go through this insurance process first, no matter what, even if you're.
Right, right, but they're, they're saying
Yeah.
They will help me
Yeah.
Go through it with the insurance company in FEMA. Doesn't matter if you're a business or a town or a person.
Well, I would just call the, whoever's in charge of BLT Insurance, there's a head guy. Just say, we are not getting a response, and we need some, we need help.
Right.
Anything else we can do for you though, for that?
So, um, the woman who has our account at BLCT is very good. She went on vacation for a couple of weeks, but she'll be back, I know.
So I guess we should handle equipment purchases kinda on a one-off basis, um. You know, if a compressor, we do need a compressor, and we do need a welder. Um, and so we can price those out and you know, the board can decide whether you wanna, we wanna put out the cash for it or not.
Well, I think we should, they need them.
Yeah.
What are we waiting for? As long as they put it on a pallet or something. You know, they should think about that for the future, um, that they're kinda up off the floor.
Yeah, yeah. Way off the floor.
And uh, but no, I mean, I don't think they need to go out and have a Christmas shopping and buy all their little tools, but the basics that they need, they need to buy them. But we also need to really be thinking soon, I I need to talk to the treasurer about, you know, how much we've spent so far. And we should know soon, you know, with, with FEMA, um, you know, how much do we need to borrow? We're gonna have to borrow some money soon, but I have no idea. I have no idea. We need to buy a heating system for the town hall, it's gonna get cold, valets gonna be in there. We can't wait.
Right. Now, the heating system is another issue, right? Um, just getting somebody to respond.
Yeah, um, I think Linda and I can set something up with Born's and at least have them come out. Ask them, we'll get started that way and then get goods as needed.
So solid waste problems, um, we have not yet, uh, ju- just because of the flood, um, we have not yet gotten appointment with the head of solid waste. Um, and so that is still an open issue. Uh, that kinda took a backseat, but I don't wanna lose sight of it, uh, cause we continue to have pretty nasty problems, um, out there. The road curve project, uh, I mentioned that last week, uh, so we should start to see those signs go up next week. Um, they're all pre-designated, they know exactly where they want them. The state apparently did this survey back in twenty eighteen and has just now, um, approved it, and they will be the ones putting the signs up. Um, bridge debris, uh, so we got, got a hold of the state regarding the bridge debris, and uh we need a long reach excavator to actually do it. Uh, we can rent one from Blow and Cody. And the other alternative is that Tatro, I think it is.
Petro.
Petro is on the rail trail right now with a long reach, uh, cause they're clear, cleaning out the, uh, the rail trail bridges. And so Dylan is going to ask them if while they're doing it, we can hire them to do a side job and clean out our bridges as well. Um, be a hefty price tag with this, unfortunately.
Well, we have sixty days, and the question tomorrow is it sixty days from the flood or sixty days from the declaration, and that, the declaration was July seven, fourteenth, I think. Seventeenth.
So we're, we're thirty days into it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think I'll pass, I, I wanna talk a little bit about some of the management issues that came up from the flood, but I, I would prefer to postpone that, it's not urgent, but I think we, you know, we learned some lessons, um. For instance, your emergency manager should not also be a fireman. Um, because they can't do two things at once. Um, and we really were, we're without an emergency manager for this emergency. Um, and, and so I just wanna go over a number of management issues of that sort, but we'd prefer to do that at a later time. Servpro came in and I looked at the garage today, uh, Bob took uh, a swath of the plywood off, and there was a lot of uh, mold behind it. And so we had Servpro come in, Servpro, um, is gonna And so we had Servpro come in, Servpro um is gonna do an estimate on it. They would. Their recommendation was tear down the building, but uh the.
Is it? Why? Because of mold?
Oh, it's just so far gone. It's everything, you know, they're 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 pulling out this plywood and what's behind the plywood? It looks like uh an old barn from eighteen nineties back there, seriously.
Built in nineteen seventy-four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's been through four floods.
Yeah. Yeah.
Weather, cleaning, maintenance.
Yeah.
For so long.
Yep. Um so we will be getting a bid from them. Uh the work they have to do is really extensive. They gotta tear out all of the walls. Pretty much tear out the bathroom, tear out the office and those have to be rebuilt. Uh because all of the, you know, the walls are all mold. Uh mold's very unhealthy. Um.
What about on the other side?
On the fire department side? Same problem and the fire department just ripped out all kinds of stuff yesterday. Um they're trying to solve it themselves, but they're they're getting to the point where they pulled all the insulation out.
Oh, is that what was in there?
You're gonna have to. Cause when they went in, they, we had a foot and they took three feet. And anything from the floor three feet up.
Yeah, yeah, they take all of that out.
Dry it for a week and we spray their can.
Yeah. Big dehumidifiers, um so the equipment will have to all be out of the. Garage for um you know, two weeks is what he said. He had a, he had some kind of fancy gadget that could measure the amount of uh. Water in the wall.
That at church.
Yeah, no, this thing was just bouncing right off. Um so we'd have to kinda restage the. Uh the equipment up to schoolhouse, school.
Or school stars.
Yeah. Um he would like to get to it like right away, uh because mold is mold.
We wait the worst it gets.
Yeah. Yeah. Um and uh so we talked about the wastewater committee. And I um did post it on the website that we're looking for. Uh new members for the wastewater committee. That's what I got.
Thank you. And thank you for all your hard work. We do appreciate it.
But you said one. Think it's just easier to go get a welder.
Yeah.
That's what we're saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Go get a new welder, get a new. Uh motor, electric motor for the compressor and go at it. You're not look free.
No, I don't, I agree with you. I agree with you.
That's probably the only thing that's wrong with that compressor. Just motors had it.
Might be.
To get it rebuilt, it's gonna cost you at least two fifty anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, new compressors are not that expensive. Then it's the time and the labor and the transportation and so forth.
Just food for thought, you know, as we repair this building, these buildings over there. Um. You know, it's always been for years um that we need to move those two, those two buildings out of the flood. Way, not that we need another project, but I'd. Hate to spend tons of money on that, um knowing that. You know, maybe within, I hopefully within ten years we'll find a home for them. Not that we have to be shoddy either, but you know, just. Food for thought, that's all.
Yeah, no, it's, they need to move, um. I don't think it can withstand one more flood, really.
And I don't like the idea of them being this river here and them being there so isolated and. You can't get out anywhere and uh it it's no good. That the woke has a lot of open land. Okay, we'll move on to the select board review in action, uh just need um. Select board to approve the. Fire department holding a cone, point drop on fifteen uh September second and third. Just make a quick motion and I can sign the letter for Jim.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Um. I wanted to. I have a question for the quick question that's not on the agenda either for the board. Um E nine one one signs, I reached out to Dan. Daniel today and he has two hundred uh posts for the signs.
Hmm.
Um and I said, well, do you, do we have to pick them up? And he said, um, well, I can send them to you, but that would be a hundred dollars. So what do you wanna do?
Well, we have to go anyway, so we'll pick them up.
Alright.
They're in Berlin, right?
Right.
Yeah. Um yeah, we have to go there anyway and get more cones um and a couple of other items, so.
Alright, and see if any more of those E nine one one signs are available.
Yeah, he's also got our Chevron signs that we need to pick up. Um this is for the pond road at Corshane.
Mm-hmm.
Took a long time to get.
School Street Bridge Discussion, um. I sent you an email. From. Bob Belder. Um. Saying that the historic preservation assessment says that there's no longer a historic district within the vicinity of the. Bridge. Which um I disagree with, I thought School Street was a historic district. Um, I haven't had time to look it up, um. Anyway. Um, he's attached section plans and elevation views. For a trust br- bridge or a. Multi-gurder.
Yeah, the multi-gurder, everything's underneath. Seeing that that one's cheaper, isn't it?
Um.
Deep, cheap. It's cheap, alright.
Alright, the advantages of the multi-gurder bridge include lower construction cost. Lower future maintenance, a trust bridge would need to be thoroughly washed after each winter to remove accumulated salt and debris to prevent deterioration. Um which I don't think we're doing. If a trust bridge is not routinely routinely washed, it will reduce the service life. Of the coating system, um. And if we go with a new trust bridge, they'd recommend, uh we would recommend galvanizing. To provide longer lasting corrosion protection. A multi-gurder bridge would likely utilize weather, weathering steel, which would not require any future painting. Um. The duration of the school street closure would be slightly shorter with a multi-gurder bridge compared to a trust. Um. Both bridge types can accommodate a future sewer line. For a trust bridge, a sewer line would likely be supported from. Brackets installed on the side of the trust, which would make the sewer lines highly visible. For a multi-gurder bridge, the sewer line would likely be supported between a pair of girders. It would only be visible when viewed from under the bridge. Since the sewer line would be supported above the bottom of the girder. So he needs to know by September eighth, which one we want.
Oh, I recommend that we go with the.
So first I'm gonna say that uh lower construction cost. It is not costing us anything for the construction of this bridge.
Alright.
A hundred percent paid by the state. Um with the ARPA funds, we are paying. By using flat iron as a detour, we're paying five percent of the engineering. Uh scoping and right of way costs. For that bridge and that's all we have to pay for.
I'd say we go with the one that's not, not the trust, the uh.
You mean the one with less maintenance that you may not have to go and wash every year and all?
Yeah.
The multi-gurder.
Ah yes, that's right. Also, you'd have your sewer line or.
Yeah, um.
But do, what kind of bridge is the one there by Tomelson's?
That's a trust.
That's a pony trust. That would be the original.
It doesn't have a top on it?
Right.
I like that bridge.
And they're using the coating on it that. Rust.
Right.
Has water or anything gets to it.
Yeah.
They're not washing it every year.
Oh.
This town.
No, they're not, they're not.
They're not.
Not ever, ever washing it.
They're not asking the fire department to go down and coast off Davis Bridge, so.
I'm seeing there's this much sand on this bridge and it's not even arcs and we've already got yelled at once. By the state. Last year. It has to be on their work schedule or somebody's.
I read the email and uh. On the bridges and uh. Just seemed to me that the. The less expensive choice would be.
Yeah, as Linda said, the expense is not an issue. It's.
Lower maintenance.
It's maintenance.
Yes.
It's not as attractive, you know, it's kinda, I think, you know. If this is historic School Street, I think it is. And um you know, a pony trust really kind of fits the. You know, the atmosphere.
Is this the pony trust? It doesn't look like. I don't know how to read this.
Oh, it's upside down.
Oh.
Yes, it is. This is the pony trust. That is the pony trust. It's very low, it's not as high as the one was down here. It's only about two and a half foot.
Oh, it wouldn't have that nice classic look or those.
It wouldn't have the six to eight foot.
Yeah.
It looked like a causeway.
Uh look at it, you'd see Florida or.
Yeah.
Did you all see them? Did you all?
The the normal one that they're talking about with the girder is something you would see.
The interstate would still. Or there's what the interstate has with the multi ones and it's the concrete deck and the side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Concrete sides.
It has very little character.
Until you hit it.
Yeah.
It has a lot of character.
And most characters along the bridge for color. I've got some, I've got some hats that would.
Well, I see both points. I mean, I I. I I think this steel one is not very attractive, but I like the maintenance free. Um that's why we've got ourselves in trouble with the Ford Hill Bridge and this one.
Mm-hmm.
Um because we just. Don't maintain our bridges correctly.
All of our bridges are in bad shape because of that. And I don't, yes, it'd be lower maintenance, but. There is gonna be maintenance after X number of years.
Well, he just said the lower maintenance was the.
Right.
It appears their preference is the multi-trust.
Well, they're paying for it.
Right.
I mean, that one that was, that's there now, was there for a good seventy-five years.
Yeah.
So.
And we've spent a bunch of work on it.
Yeah.
You know.
It's been painted and repainted for.
Right.
Number of times.
So it's up to the board.
I guess, you know, in my, in my opinion, if there's a history of uh. Maintenance or not providing maintenance, um. And that is what has cost us two bridges. Um and I don't see a road crew getting to be any bigger than the three-man road crew that it is now. Stretch to the limit.
Yeah.
Um I think personally I would go with the safe road, even though I don't think it's very attractive and that would be the lower maintenance. Multi-gurder.
Here's, it's a motion, or food, that a motion?
No, it's just my opinion.
This uh our fire department's always warning at wind drop every year. Why couldn't it be off the bridge or in here?
I think they just need to be asked.
And just be asked, and say, hey, this would sort of be a little bit of a wind drop.
Alright guys, we're gonna be sitting here all night. Well, let's get a motion, move the other, I guess I'm horny or whatever, uh go with whatever.
Like the idea of a more attractive bridge, but. Again, we, the road crew isn't gonna have the time. You know, we got a wonderful crew right now and we have no idea what the future holds as far as. Better bridge maintenance. I prefer the old style, but. The lower maintenance. I, I'd go with the, the other one.
I still would let you know. What they're saying is lower maintenance in life.
It's a good idea to wash all bridges after winter, but it is less critical for a multi-gurder bridge. And would mainly be limited to clearing any accumulated debris. From the bridge deck, bridge joint and bridge seats, which should be minimal in this case.
I mean, they've done it to every bridge. Basically on fifteen, they've torn up the deck. Somewhat and fixed them.
Yeah, that's, that's regular kind of maintenance though.
Well, they're checking for structural.
Oh.
After twenty-five years, so. I don't know what to tell you. If you don't, you're still gonna have to wash it.
Right.
Only you'll have to really worry about is crumbling concrete. Let's say it was.
A lot about that. That went out in Ohio, it just went.
Oh, yeah. But uh.
I don't care, one way or the other, I'd rather see the pony bridge. That's all. And we just gotta make the time to do the maintenance. Now. School Street is. Our historic. Area. I'd almost say the whole downtown, when you start going through every building.
Selective again.
Yeah, let's left with the dent.
Gosh, crap.
You just stand by what you are, what you want. So I go for the uh trust.
I'm going for the trust.
You're going for that?
He wants to go for the trust, I will too, what the hell.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we go for the trust bridge.
I'll second that.
More discussion hopefully.
They'll hang us all off the sides a bit when they put it up. They'll hang us all off the sides a bit when they put it up.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close and carried. North Wilket Road repairs. So we met with, um. We didn't meet with anybody. We talked with, uh, we've been, we did meet, we had a little Zoom, so we Kurt and I were kind of figuring out, um. Whether we should ha- pave the North Wilket Road section that got damaged. Fix it, just save it. And then look for a grant to stabilize the bank, which needs to be stabilized at a later time. Um, or whether we should go with um, wait and not do anything and then uh, go with a, a bigger grant from a federal aid highway, but it, it could take up to two years. And it might be more extensive. Um. To repair. So we met with uh, LCPC to kind of brainstorm. Um, they had a few ideas in mind, um. I think we ultimately are suggesting that we just pave the North Wilket Road now. When they pave have our paving grant and look for grants to stabilize that section, um in the future.
Yeah.
Is that's all with the board?
It's kind of a classic that FEMA will, or in this case, um federal highway will replace it to where, where it was before, but won't fund the extra work to armor it further, so it's a separate project.
And it sounded like it was extensive. And lengthy.
Yeah.
And um, the cost of the town, I think it's twenty percent or something. And you know, he was talking like our share would be two hundred thousand dollars, it's like. Ah, you don't have that kind of money.
Other words, it's cheaper to let the road rush out, then get funding emergency to fix it and just.
Yeah, that's pretty much what they said.
As our senator, as our senator pointed out, the worst thing that didn't happen with the flood was it didn't wipe out North Wilket. That's good. That would have been the best thing that could have been.
Well, we heard it, but it didn't take it out.
Didn't take it out, that's, next time we have a flood, I'm gonna go up there with dynamite.
It's a couple of spots, give it a couple.
I can't help it, I am a black powder, we can make white box, hope you aren't.
Ervy Road Trail, I personally have not had the time to think anymore about it.
If you don't have the time to send the road crew up to you.
No.
Barricade.
And I, and I feel I, what I need to do is go there and go up that hill and see. Um, it seems like many people are using that entrance right there and we can't really close it off. We could not permanently close it off. It looks like you know, maybe you could do it in the summer. But, you know, you could put a gate up there, but they're just gonna cut it, the chain.
Or go around it some way.
Yeah. I, I mean, you can't put boulders in there because it looks like the entrance to the snowmobile trail and the Catamont Trail. Um. And road crew isn't gonna go up and move boulders every season, changes. Um. I, I couldn't come up with a solution.
Have we heard from the owner? What's his name, man?
Brian Cohen.
Brian? He's gone quiet, I guess.
Private burial policy? I looked at it.
Okay.
You do?
Um. And it looked good. I didn't have any questions or changes with it.
Be common sense about
Yeah.
order safety and all that.
Now who? Who issues this permit?
Uh, the, um.
Health officer.
Health officer, yes.
Save it.
This is following state statute. Um. They did add a couple of things like the GPS coordinate, which I think will be very helpful. Um, and then clarified the difference between a green burial site and a basket site. Cause they are different depths. But other than that, I think it's pretty straightforward. And it also gives the applicant some guidance on uh what they need to do in terms of uh vital records, land records, uh, those other answerary uh, things that they need to do to uh, complete this as a transaction. So if it's good with everybody, um. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Wilket private burial policy.
I'll second that motion.
Does anyone else have any questions of Kurt on this? Now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those. So carried. September eighth barbecue and information sharing event. Hopefully it doesn't rain, but who knows? Um. The good news is I've gotten six hundred dollars so far in sponsors to help with that, um. I've hired, um John Galmor to come and play guitar during it, um. Haven't done much else. Um, Bernard checked on corn today and the corn where we get it at the farm did not get flooded. And it should be ready in time. We just need helpers, like, it's too hard for me to answer questions and run around and so I'm gonna need helpers.
Start timing.
It's five to seven. We need corn boilers and shunkers and you know, just, um. The fire department's gonna do the grilling. Library's gonna do dogs, hot dogs, rolls. Ice cream and cones, um. I asked Belinda for hand offers for hamburgers. If not, I think I'll have enough money left over to buy hamburgs and rolls and butter and plates. Um. I know the wastewater committee's coming, the forest committee's coming, the schoolhouse committee's coming, um. What did we do about the army's coming to help us set up, but they want to set up too? Did we respond?
Yes, I did, yeah. He just wants to have a little table, he's a recruiter.
Right.
Out of Morrisville. So probably have some pamphlets or something of that nature. The limoil waste.
Solid waste.
Solid waste, yeah.
That's good.
Gonna have a table to discuss recycling.
Cera, right?
Cera Loverage.
Anything else we should discuss?
Uh, planning commission, um. If they're going to pursue a better places for you, might want to uh, have a survey available for folks to complete.
Well, this is the opportunity to do that. Do you think of anything else, Monica, we should have there? That you think the community wants to find out about what's happening?
I can't think of anything.
Okay. I can get a few pop-up tents, but if anyone knows any, I, otherwise they'll just have to be tentless. Too hard to find. Oh, and the school's coming again and the kids.
That's really good.
Yeah. I did not invite the Girl Scouts to do games this year just because they seemed frustrated and I don't know. Um. Last year. We still will have games out there, but people, we won't have anyone really you know, overseeing it.
I did send an email to Kelly Resitano, who has the Wilket Creative Arts Group to see if they might be interested in doing uh rock painting activity.
Nice.
Yep. Uh, we had been, well, they had been thinking of doing that uh, when we were going to have the rail trail uh, celebration and we're gonna have a garden party, but uh, since that was canceled, um, that may be something they would like to do.
That would be nice. It's good to have, um, activities of all ages. The mini garden gonna do anything or?
No.
I like planting plants last year.
Well, I'll be eighty in February, maybe I should have a booth and have a napping contest. Or nodding off contest, how's that? Nodding on.
Good for you.
Alright.
You'd need a tree. You'd need a tree and a beard and a tree, a beard, and we'll call you Rip Van Winkle.
Okay, we it seems like it's getting together and then next meeting, we can try to really finalize who's gonna do what in terms of helping out, cause there's lots of little things to do. Setting out garbage cans and all that. Anything else?
Yeah, I had just a few questions.
Okay.
Truck sixteen was towed, what happened?
What's that?
Town truck was towed.
Yeah, uh broke down. Broke down on the, out on the road, had to be towed to Allied. Yeah.
Serious or serious issue or just a?
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, that's an old truck, um, it consistently has issues, yeah. Yeah, I mean. So is it our newer truck now, we're fine there. Um, all the trucks have to be inspected um, for flood damage, flood break, basically breaks. Um. But yeah, now we've had that truck, it's a truck Joey drives, it's broken down three times this summer. Yeah.
Because of lines breaking, like oil lines.
Yes, yes, that kind of thing, yeah. I mean, they, they do a really good job in maintenance, um. They spend a lot of time, you know, maintaining those trucks and keeping them in, going in operation. Uh, they, they're not like automobiles, you know, they they, they do break.
They're working hard.
They, they, they're hardworking, right, yeah.
Maintenance is about a thousand percent better than it used to be.
That's, oh, I think you had a bunch of them. Bunch of questions, no? Okay.
There's a lot of questions I have, but they wouldn't.
I suppose a gathering I could flower threateningly at unworthy children. Had a lot of practice at that over the years.
Well, the whole idea of starting this group, this event years ago, three years ago, was to inform the public, our residents, of what we as a board are working on and so it's good you know, if you're there to be able to answer questions and and, and talk to the public. And get feedback that comes back to us on how they're feeling.
I know, there's a good.
Forest committee will be there. Forest Schoolhouse wastewater. School Board, school, the school. Solid waste. I don't think we have to talk about FEMA with a special table. But we're there to answer questions they ask.
I mean, that's, it's, it's a necessary evil. It could be simpler with FEMA, but we have no control over that.
You're usually quite generous, I think.
Like I say, everything has to be just so.
Yeah. Right, I entertain a motion.
Oh, make the motion. Then we adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. You wanna stay here till next time, you better speak up.